We are on the record officially.
I finally got it right again. Good evening, everybody. Tonight's the Planning and Zoning Commission at Darien, Connecticut. It's Tuesday, April 23rd, 2019, Room 206 at Town Hall. It's a regular meeting, and I'll give it to Kevin. The first public hearing item is...
Continuation of public hearing regarding proposed amendments to Darien zoning regulations due to year 2019 put forth by the Commissions of the LLC.
No, you can just go to the end line.
Public hearing open 3/26/19. Deadline to close, public hearing is 4/30/2019 unless extension of time is granted by applicant.
Same with number two.
We received an email from Bob Maslin today agreeing to the continuation of this public hearing to May 28, 2019. That's at 8:00 PM in Room 206 at Town Hall.
All right.
Number two, continuation...
May 28th, it's Tuesday.
Continuation of public hearing regarding landfilling and regating application number 451, Michael Gedney, 145 Old Kings Highway North. Public hearing open 3/26/2019. Deadline to close, public hearing is 4/30/19 unless extension of time is granted by applicant.
And...
Yes, in this case Fred has been trying to track down Mr. Gedney's representative, Chris Olson. Mr. Olson has emailed Fred and said the project is on hold at the moment while the homeowner decides to proceed. There's two issues here. First and foremost, we believe there's wetlands in the back of the property that they shall work within 50 feet of. And thus, although the wetlands have not been identified by the applicant, the work appears to be within 50 feet of inland wetlands. In addition, Assistant Director of Public Works Darren Ostafine sent an email with some comments on the engineering that needs to be addressed, and the applicant has not addressed those. At this point, we'd recommend the Commission close the hearing, and we'll continue to work with the applicant on withdrawing the application and resubmitting once the new materials are in. So we would just need a motion from the Commission. The neighbors were notified last month. The applicant's not here tonight, so we'd recommend motion, close the hearing, and we'll see if we can get the applicant to withdraw.
If you close it, is it automatically by default approved?
No, it would be, the Commission would have to vote one way or the other.
I motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Number three, we continue. Business site plan application number 136D, special permit application number 231A, landfilling and regating application 455, George at Work LLC, Two Squab Lane. Proposal to renovate and expand the footprint of existing building for the purpose of establishing a new two-story quick-service restaurant with an outdoor dining area and associated retail bakery on the basement level. Construct a new patio staircase and handicap access ramp to extend through the eastern side of the property from Squab Lane, create a new parking, and perform related site development activities. The .33 acre subject property is situated in the north side of Grove Street at the northeastern corner formed by its intersection with Day Street and is shown on Assessor's Map number 73 in lot number 34, with shared parking in lots 26, 27, 28, 29, and 30 in the CBD zone.
Jeremy, you want to kick us off with just a quick overview of what we're looking at, and then we'll give it to Amy if you don't have one. What's the matter?
No, that's fine. You may recall, actually, you may not recall, because in 2006, a related development came through for the Brooks Brothers Building and STEAM and changes to those front properties. And at the time, Two Squab Lane was included in that whole redevelopment. That part of the project was never constructed, so the permit expired. In this case, a new applicant has come along, same property owner, with a proposal in two parts. One is various site plan improvements for additions and alterations to the existing Two Squab Lane building, and some parking stairs, handicap ramp, some other plantings and things, and a special permit request for the proposed uses, which would be a bakery on what you can call either the basement or first floor, and on the upper floor, a restaurant. So those are special permit uses. So the Commission's looking at both aspects tonight, the site plan and the special permit. Part of it will be a shared parking agreement with the front uses extending from STEAM all the way to the Brooks Brothers and Darien-Roeaten Bank. So we're going to look at both aspects of the application tonight.
Perfect. Good to have you talking.
Hi, good evening. Amy Sabatakas, Ritchie Law Group. I represent the applicant, which is the proposed property tenant, George at Work LLC. George Sosos is here, who's the owner of the LLC. And as Jeremy pointed out, the property owner is the Dulcetti family. Mr. Dulcetti's here this evening. I also have Andy Sumalidis. I should have that one, who's the project engineer. Our project architect Tucker Chases apologizes that he's not here. He unfortunately became unwell today. So hopefully between Andy and I, we can handle the architect's questions. So I just put up the aerial shot. I think everyone knows where Two Squab Lane is, but just in case, it is the small white building behind where Brooks Brothers is, right adjacent to the Darien train station, which is actually where it gets its address from, because that's Squab Lane going through the Darien train station. And as Jeremy already indicated, there was an application in 2006 to redevelop this entire area that was approved by the Commission. And actually, at that time, the building that was going to be built at Two Squab Lane practically went from property line to property line. It was a triangular-shaped building, as you can see, it's a triangular-shaped lot. And it had what was referred to as a monumental staircase that was a, really a huge approximately 40-foot staircase all the way from Grove Street up to the parking lot. And so, as was mentioned, that there was no tenant, that work was not done, so that approval has since expired. So we're coming forward with a brand-new application for the property. And we're trying to retain some of the best parts of that application, but the building itself has scaled down quite a bit, and one of the reasons being that the proposed tenant doesn't really use any of the green space that we have existing around here, not really develop the site out as far as possible. I should, however, say that in connection with the 2006 application, because it was all a joint application, there was a joint drainage system and a shared parking agreement. And that drainage retention system was built, and the shared parking agreement was recorded on the land record. So those are in place and still active, as if this was a much larger building. And Mr. Sumalidis will tell you when he gets up to speak that he did review the drainage that was put in with today's standards, and it is more than sufficient to handle this smaller building that's being proposed. As I said, the old building was 11,592 square feet, so you can imagine how much bigger it was. So we do... Oops. Yeah. And I will point out, I did hand out to each of you right before we started some revised site plans and architectural drawings. There are really some very minor changes, and I will make sure that between Andy and I, we mention those to you as we go along. As far as the site itself, we retained this idea of a staircase connecting the train station and this area. It stops now on a outdoor patio in front of the building and then goes down to Grove Street. We've added an element of a handicap ramp, because I think that that's something that was missing from the other design, since it is very difficult to get from the train station if you're less mobile. And because of the, because this is a much smaller building, we now actually have some space on-site for parking. So we do have a handicap spot as well as seven other parking spots in front for the commercial uses. And we've also proposed some stacked employee parking in the back, and a new curb cut out into the Mechanic Street parking lot, again, only for the employees. That will not be a commonly-used in-and-out.
You dropped the Mechanic Street parking lot.
Grove Street, yeah, the Mechanic Street. That's Mechanic Street. No, that's not Mechanic. Mechanic Street's way over. Sorry about that. Yeah, the Grove Street parking lot.
Right, so can you point out, sorry, if you can restate that and point out...
Yes, I'm sorry, I will stay, let me redo. Okay. This here is stacked employee parking with exit into the Grove Street parking lot. Again, this in-and-out will only be for employees. It will not be for people who retail customers. The retail customers will have some parking here, but also still have access to the other parking spaces on the other surrounding lots, because as I said, that shared parking agreement is in place even though we now have onsite parking. So we now have more parking than we did when the 2006 approval was approved.
Amy, while you're over there, I'm sorry, can you just point out where the handicap ramp is going to be?
Yes. So there is a staircase here that lands on this patio and goes on up. The handicap, you can, this is a ramp from Squab Lane to the patio, so you can take the ramp down to the patio, or you can turn off and go all the way down.
Okay, so it basically zigzags?
It does have to zigzag. Unfortunately, the grade change there is eight feet, so you need an extensive amount of ramp in order to accommodate the grade change requirement there.
The handicap ramp's on town property?
Yes. A portion, a good portion of it is on town property. So that was actually where I was going to go next. As far as this curb cut in the back and these connections onto Squab Lane, we have discussed those both with staff, with Public Works, and my understanding is that today, staff and Public Works met with our First Selectman's Office to sort of go over some of these elements. And the consensus is that everyone thinks that this is a very good change for the area and is very supportive of it. There are some steps that are going to need to be taken as far as some of these uses of town property, you know, who's maintaining it, liability, et cetera, but that's going to require some communications with Town Council. So what we're looking for right now is sort of, because as I said, there's definitely support to figure it out. So what we're looking for from you all is, again, support for the plan with maybe, you know, this ramp may get modified slightly, but there will still be this connection, and we will work out those types of details with Town Council, Public Works, and the First Selectman's Office. As far as the building itself... Now we better run, right? So we are retaining the existing building and expanding it slightly. The building height will not change. That is part of the existing building. There'll be outdoor balconies, this outdoor plaza seating area. It has been fully reviewed and approved by the Architectural Review Board, all proposed changes.
So Amy, the physical structure that is there now, is that right there?
It is, it's that, but we're expanding it.
Okay.
Yes, but the main body of the structure is what's there now. The first, the basement floor will be a retail bakery that's just in-and-out to buy, you know, baked goods. Then on the first floor...
Can you point out the floors, just so there's no confusion about...
Yep. So on this rendering, you see the entrance here. Underneath this balcony is the retail bakery. And then I should say, I've used in my application materials and in my presentation the concept of the quick-service restaurant, which is, I know something that you're considering in the current zoning regulation changes, because I know you're familiar with that phrase. However, because of the timing when this was filed, this is under the existing regulations, but, so not the ones that you're considering now, which obviously haven't been approved yet.
Hold on, didn't we change the quick service already? Or that's part of...
Not yet. Okay, sorry.
However, the concept of a quick-service restaurant, that doesn't really matter for this zone, but it's something that you're familiar with. So the idea is this isn't table, seated, table seating with a menu, et cetera. It's a counter service and seat yourself within the restaurant. So I'm going to talk, what I'd like to do is have Andy speak to the site, and as I said, sort of between the two of us, hopefully speak to any other questions about the building. And then after we're done with that, present the special permit criteria for the uses that we're proposing, because I think it'd be easier to sort of separate those out, if that's okay.
Sounds good.
Can I ask one question first?
Yeah, of course.
Relative to the seating, there's 46 inside and 22 outside. When is it 22 going to reopen? Is it 12 months a year, only happy year?
Well, no, it won't be open when it's, you know, in the winter. I mean, it's, you know, the seating will be available if there's a nice day. We go out there, I mean, I don't think we're going to have sort of strict cutoff times, but it's going to be weather permitting.
Kind of like Grove Street had, the tables are there 24/7, 365, but...
Correct. Yes.
So it's inside and outside, it's a total of 68 seats?
I, yes, I counted them off a while ago, but that sounds about right.
Okay, go ahead.
Andy Sumalidis from Land Tech in Westport.
Could you spell your last name for me, please? Thank you so much.
No problem. Just to touch on a few other infrastructure things with this building, there's, it's currently serviced by Sewer and Water, so the infrastructure's there for Sewer and Water. We'll reconnect to those utilities. And there is a transformer on-site as well. That was part of the original approval of getting power to the site, so we'll be pulling service from that transformer for this building as well. Drainage, as mentioned earlier, the infrastructure was put in back in '08. We've reran the model based on, you know, current rainfall data, so all storms 2 through 50, based on our current proposal, show a decrease in runoff. So we're exceeding the requirements for that. In terms of some of the grading, the site currently now, from the southeast grade up to the building, so essentially what we'll be doing is cutting into the site to get this parking along the front here. And by cutting, we're also allowing to expose the lower level of this building. So that's kind of how you enter the bakery, is through that lower level. So we'll be cutting in and exposing that front foundation facade. The southwest portion of the property, we're proposing this six employee parking spaces, we'll also be cutting slightly to create that. And what we've done there is supplement the existing town parking separation from our employee parking by planting some arborvitae to provide some screening there from our employee parking. And the employee parking, you know, one day, you know, one morning in and out, night in and out, so it's not heavy traffic. In terms of other landscaping, one of the critical trees on-site, the 30-inch oak by our handicap ramp, we're going to retain that. So this wooden, made out of azac wood ramp, will have sonnet two pilings, obviously avoiding the root structure of this tree. There are a couple of trees in that vicinity that we do need to take down, and we're going to supplement that by adding three Japanese maples on-site to bring some color to the site as well. We're also providing some additional, the current transformers currently screened by fence, we'll supplement that as well with some arborvitae screening to soften that up as well. In terms of site circulation, you access this site through Grove Street. The Grove Street connects up into Squab Lane, and that's where we're proposing this curb cut. We did actually add signage to that curb cut for employee-only parking as well, so some people know not to just pull in there.
Where's the dumpster go?
So dumpster, maybe I'll see if I can...
If I jump in?
So the dumpster's actually underneath the building, underneath this balcony, enclosed area.
Not the dumpster, hold on, let me, I'm sorry, let me just clarify that.
Storage underneath.
Yeah, so there is, part of the, and I should have mentioned this before, part of the overall site application was the creation of a large dumpster enclosure off, that's not on the, not on Two Squab Lane. It's actually, you can see it on the site plan over here.
Oh, yeah.
So it's a large dumpster that was sized, again, for this larger building as a restaurant. And so what will happen is there's a fenced-in area on the basement level, which Andy was just referring to, that will be sort of during the day where trash, and that's where deliveries will come in and out. And then each night, they will take the trash out to the larger dumpster, shared dumpster area.
So think of it as a garbage dock that will then be cleared?
Yes, that's a good way to put it, yes.
Okay.
Amy, what's the, what's the, those two boxes in the foreground there?
The transformers.
Those are the transformers?
These here?
Yeah.
Yeah, these are the transformers.
That exist.
Is this shared garbage already in existence on the property here?
Yes.
On that property?
If you go out there now, there's a, it's a huge dumpster enclosure, which is, if you look at it, you can tell it's clearly oversized for what the uses are that are there right now. It's the size of this.
To your point, I just jumped in on Steve, but I think he was going to make the point that STEAM's already using that same dumpster. So you have a restaurant already used.
Yes, yes, so it's clear.
The worst, she'd have to do a frequency update or something like that if things got...
If things got, but it shouldn't get, it shouldn't overflow, because it was sized, as I said. Again, it was sized in 2006 for what was going to be a much larger restaurant building on this site.
Do you know what the frequency of pickup is now?
Twice a week.
Twice a week.
Thank you. So if a third day had to be added, that's...
If a third day had to be added, it wouldn't kill anyone.
Got it.
Let's go back to something.
Go ahead.
Can you go back to the site plan again?
Sure.
I don't mean to be piggy, but your arborvitae that are next to the parking area, you ran out of land. If you look, if you overlay that with the, yeah, keep going to the north, right? If you look at this survey, there's no space there to put them.
It's about five feet between the curbs?
Like, the plan, the plan shows that the Japanese maples are proposed on town property, and some of the arborvitae will end up being on town property.
Correct. Yeah, it straddles the property line. Some of them start on our property here, and as you work your way west...
Right, the parking islands are town, so those are showing to be planted.
So that will also have to get approved by the various...
And that big tree you talked about, that's also on town property? That's not your tree?
Correct.
Sorry. I think it's worth noting that the way this area has been maintained historically, and Mr. Dulcetti will say it's for the past 100 years, has been, this whole area has been maintained by his family, so the sort of demarcations between town and private property owner, because it's a better, more interest to the private property owner, the private property owners have traditionally maintained it, but yes, I agree with you.
I've seen him out there cutting the grass.
I'm sorry?
I've seen him out there cutting the grass.
Yes. So we're, you know, we will need to clean some of this up with an agreement with the town, and that's part of this project.
Yeah, that's all.
But it's, that's sort of why some of our, I just am sort of explaining, some of the reasons some of our plantings are on town property is that that's the way it's always been maintained.
Understood. And it's an improvement to the area.
Yes, exactly.
Public-private partnerships are welcome.
Fabulous, thank you.
The last question I had, the ramp that goes southeast to northwest, does that get a seven-foot drop, and the other one's got a shorter drop, because it's graduated?
Yes.
This is a ramp? That's got a seven-foot pitch? And this one's got the softer pitch?
So that's, no, it's the opposite. It's the opposite. So that, this is a walkway that comes, leads up to that ramp, and the ramp starts at the bottom of that walkway.
Right.
And then this is the, that, the wooden ramp that's, this is a walkway that connects the Squab Lane park to our plaza.
So that's, that's level?
That's pretty level, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. And then, do you have any elevation renderings of the ramp?
Of the ramp?
Well, yeah, the design or the, you know, the design renderings.
We don't have any renderings of the ramp.
Did Jeremy, did ARB look at any of that? I guess they wouldn't have, if they don't have it. All right, that might be something everybody should see. Since it's going to be on town property, and the stairwell as well.
The stairwell's on our property.
Oh, it's on, okay. You don't have a rendering of that?
Yeah, you can see it in this. The ramp's just not showing on here.
Got it, okay, thank you.
So that's, yeah, that's, that's staircase.
Okay.
Over there on that side.
Because you said it's wood?
The ramp would be wood. We're going to do azac composite wood, unlike sonnet two pilings.
I guess there's a question, there's a process question, Jeremy.
Yes.
Should we have ARB look at it after the fact and make it, just so...
They already are, according to the letter, they already are, with part of it after the fact.
Which part?
It said they see the stuff on-site when it's flooded, because they have to see this, they have to see that. The letter said go to your other commissions and go get all your approvals.
I think there's concern by the First Selectman about the style of handicap ramp.
Yeah, okay, so...
No doubt about that.
Yeah.
But the Architecture Review Board...
Which I was unaware of until you just mentioned it, but I could gather that it's going to be on town property, so the town is in interest in how it's going to look.
And the ARB never looked at the nature of the ramp.
Got it. So that might be a follow-up item. We'll figure that out, unless you have a better idea.
So this is sort of the catch-22, which is, where do we, where do we start with this? I think that, you know, what we were hoping was to come to you for approval for the concept of the handicap ramp, and then work with the town on exactly, you know, we think the azac material makes sense, because that's how we save the tree. There's, you know, there've been a lot of thought that's gone into this, but there needs to be a continuing conversation, because it is something on town property. So I don't know if that should, if we, if, let me put it this way. We could get a rendering to you, and you could approve it, and then we're going to, it's going to have to be changed because of a different town body.
That's probably a good, good process to follow.
But you would, but I guess what I was saying is, we were hoping to sort of finish with you all and then work with them separately.
I guess you'd have to come back for an amendment then?
And I guess that's the question, is it really an amendment if it's still, if the approval is to have a handicap ramp?
All right, so I'll be clear.
Yes.
I probably think it's a good idea for the Commission and ARB to look at the ramp.
Okay.
And if there's modifications that have to come along by the First Selectman's Office or...
Well theoretically, everyone will see it at the same time.
Yeah, so, again, if there's small modifications, that's something, but might as well, let's get that done.
Okay, so you would like to see that as part of, as part of this application?
Part of this application.
Okay.
Sorry, I, you know, this is...
No, I understand.
We're learning on the fly on this one, or I would have had Jeremy...
Right, and like I said, it was a little, you know, it's, there's still steps to be taken.
Okay.
Who required the handicap ramp? It's going to the first floor, right?
Oh, no, it's, well...
It's going to...
It's going from the parking lot all the way down, so it's a great idea, I think.
It's going from the, from the first floor of the restaurant down to the STEAM-level parking lot?
It goes all the way from the Darien train station parking lot down to the STEAM.
That's right, it's going back and forth, not just...
Correct.
Yeah.
Oh, I had the other way around.
Right. If you were, if you were, Andy shows that last parking space is a handicap parking space. The only way for those folks to get upstairs to the restaurant...
That's a good point.
Is to get through the ramp.
There's no elevator in the building, so the only way for them to go to the restaurant is to go up the handicap ramp.
Got it. All right, so yeah, we'll just get that into the design. All right, cool. Anything else?
Any other questions? I mean, I don't have much more to add in terms of the site or the architecture if you have any questions.
I don't, I don't have any. Do you, anybody over here?
No.
Gentlemen? Okay, you're good.
So what, your original...
One other question I had, sorry. Electric, is it underground, or is it, how's electricity getting there?
Underground, from the transformer underground.
Yeah, perfect.
Do we, so I have a question. Do we have to ask if there's gas lanterns outside?
You mean monoblock type stuff?
No, no. No, like for heating or anything? Is that, we don't have to...
You show, I think you can point out those, those lights on the building?
Sure.
Which, in lieu of putting a new lamppost, there's a lamppost on, Fred and I took a look earlier today. There's a lamppost on Squab.
I would like to, no, no, I mean, I want to dine there in October.
Oh.
It's a little chilly.
Yes.
It's chilly. It's a heater, and sometimes I do have a light in them, but, or a heater. I feel like that might be something that citizens might enjoy.
So you're talking about two different things?
Okay, yeah, we're totally, so let's go...
But they have lights on them. So if there, if there are gas, gas heaters outside, oftentimes they do have illumination. So that would be something that we would need to know, which I think is a good idea So that would be something that we would need to know, which I think is a good idea where the applicant would be able to use the outdoor space longer. And if that's something we'd have to come back and we'd have to get approved by, you know?
The commission could just acknowledge that that's a possibility.
I would like to acknowledge that as a possibility.
Got it.
Outside parking lot.
Outdoor, but if there's lights on it.
There's lights on the building, and that, and I should point out that...
So go back to Jeremy's point, if we could, thank you, but also the, uh, the lantern that he was discussing and the outdoor lighting.
So one of the changes from, so why I submitted the revised plans to you is that our original plans didn't show all the onsite lighting. So there is lighting on the staircase itself and then the rest of the site lighting is actually on the building and that's on the current plans and you can see it on the rendering as well.
Okay.
See all the lighting on the building.
All right, so I'm not as concerned with the building lighting, but is the staircase lighting trying to match any surrounding area or what's kind of the thought process there?
Yeah, so these lampposts here...
And the ramp, yeah.
That are basically on the four posts of the staircase would mimic the same lighting posts that are in that neighborhood, essentially.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right, so you got...
Same type of...
That question.
Same type of fixture.
So basically the model block fixtures?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
And for a handicap ramp that has, I guess, sides, do you need foot illumination, like lower illumination?
Whatever's needed for code, we'll provide. Yeah, so we'll work with the building department if they need illumination and, you know, traction, the handicap tractions at the bottom.
Yeah.
Provide all of that.
And again, just to be clear, the use of wood is because you don't wanna disrupt the tree's root system.
Correct. Putting in a concrete structure there with footings, um, you would be looking at...
Serious damage.
Seriously losing that tree.
Okay.
Um, I don't see how you save that tree by keeping that ramp in the same spot and keeping it concrete.
Which is not your tree anymore.
Right, but we want to retain it, I think, for, again, we're, we're looking at this realistically, the entire area and we wanna...
We love that tree.
You like the tree and we, we like the ramp, so that's a great compromise. Okay, perfect. Anything else?
You wanna move the changes?
I think we went through most of what the changes are this way. We added, so from, from the original submitted set to the set, there were landscaping additions, the lighting additions.
Between these two, maybe?
Between what you originally had in your package and what I handed to you today.
Okay.
So if you look, if you're looking at architecturals, you'll see the, um, lighting changes on the elevations. So if you look at the two, you know, the A three and A four sheet, you'll see the changes in the lights being added to the elevations. And we also call them out now on our site plan as well.
So is he, one, two, three, four, five, six. He added seven lights to, to page A three, which is the, which is a facade. The top is facade, facade facing Steam and facing Brooks Brothers. You're on the wrong page.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'm getting it.
You're not in our chapter. There you go. One, two, three, four, five, that's six, seven, correct.
On the front facade.
Five, six, seven. Right, seven on that one, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight on that one. Then the bottom one you added five. And that's the facade that faces the back of the building, right?
Correct.
That faces due...
North.
Which is the area that the employees will be exiting.
West.
This is what, this is the side, this is the employee parking side.
All right.
Got it. That's the only change for these plans.
Well...
For the architecturals, yeah. It was, you see some more lighting on the neck, the last sheet as well, the A four sheet. Sheet A four has the lighting as well, the other elevations, the other sides.
Good? Yep. All right.
So as far as the...
Thank you, sir.
I'm sorry. As far as the use, um, as we stated and we've sort of already begun talking about, the basement level will be the retail bakery. You can see on that level the, the small retail bakery as well as the kitchen space, this outdoor storage area that we've already discussed, which will also be used for deliveries. Um, and then there is the, um, restaurant, um, counter service on the first and then additional seating on the second floor as well. The bakery employees were expecting to arrive around four AM. Were expecting the bakery itself not to open until about seven. The restaurant, we're thinking may open as early as five in order to serve coffee to the commuters. That open time is gonna really depend on the foot traffic, frankly, so that may adjust a little bit.
Okay, so just help me understand the two businesses. The bakery, um, is counter service, basically?
Correct. It's a retail bakery.
Okay. Uh, and then the restaurant is more of a, as you said, QSR, okay?
Correct.
Special counter service.
Right, it's counter service, it's counter service and then you go sit down.
Yeah.
And, and you can take it out as well if you want to, but...
I'm sorry, one last question. Is the bakery doing any wholesale?
Um, I don't believe so. No, no wholesale.
Thank you.
So there's no seats at all in the bakery?
No seats at all in the bakery. The seat, if you wanna come in and sit down and have a cup of coffee and a pastry, you're gonna go upstairs. Into the restaurant.
And Amy, the, the proposed, the kitchen off of the bakery...
Yes.
Is that for the bakery or is that for the restaurant upstairs?
It's for both.
So it's a shared...
Correct.
Or the businesses connected?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
It's all gonna be owned and run by Mr. Susonis and his family.
Perfect.
That makes more sense.
But, so it's really one use, it's just, you know, it's, that's what...
Understood.
Two service elements to it, got it. Perfect.
Okay, that makes more sense. Okay.
Um, as I said, the, um, restaurant itself is, you know, seat yourself, counter service, so there will not be a large employee presence. We're expecting eight to nine total employees throughout the course of the day. They are, there will be a liquor license applied for and, um, bar service, so they are looking to stay open potentially until as late as, at one at night and also to potentially have some live music, not every day, but on occasion. Let's see. And deliveries, we're expecting to come in either before seven or after five, not during the busiest hours of downtown Darien. And, oh, and I, I should also mention one thing that did not come up when we were talking about the site plan itself, but as far as the construction itself, um, all of the construction will be from that front from Grove Street. We're not gonna be tying up Swab Lane or the, that back connection into the Grove Street parking lot.
Or Leroy Ave or anything like that.
I'm sorry?
Or Leroy Ave or anything like that.
Yes, exactly. So, uh, to summarize as far as the, um, what we're asking for, um, there is the site plan and landfilling and regrading application, which is mostly what, um, Andy has reviewed with you. And then we're looking for...
We didn't really go over the regrading, but it's pretty minor, right? Is it tied with the ramp, basically, and...
Correct. It's, it's the regrading in order to get the parking, it's really mostly for the parking area. So there's some more significant regrading in the front so that we can level that area out. If you look at the building now, it pretty much grows up in front of the building and then a little bit in the back where that employee parking area is.
In general, pretty minor.
Yes. Um, and then we are, um, because of the regrading that's happened, the existing building, part of the building is now turned into technically a three-story building because there's this space in the basement, which is now a full story. So we are asking for a special permit under six fifty-six E to allow that to stay as a, now a three-story structure. And then a special permit under six fifty-four B and C to permit the counter service restaurant and along with the associated, uh, retail bakery.
Okay, and does any open space have to be provided for that third story?
No, because it's the, the third story is because it's a basement.
Got it. And it's not gonna be used for any retail operations or...
Well, the basement is the retail bakery.
Or what about the, wait, so I'm confused. I thought if we had three stories, then there had to be, um, set aside.
That was...
I'm losing my touch. I should have done this.
No, no, it's this, when Amy Sushens came to the commission a few months ago on behalf of Mr. Dulcetti, the, the commission changed, modified the zoning regulations.
What did we modify to? Remind me, please, cause I'm getting...
Such that no open spaces, no, open space no longer required for that.
All right, I'll look at the regs. Remind me, sir.
Because the, the third floor is basement level, the open space requirement is...
I thought if the basement was being used for something, we would have to, but I'll, I'll double, we'll look at that.
We'll have to double check that, the exact wording.
Thank you.
Six fifty-four?
Yeah, six...
Just help me with that, sorry.
Six fifty, no, six fifty-six is about the third floor.
On the second floor?
What's that?
It's on the left.
The square footage. The top four, eight or seven foot.
That's my, that's my problem, my regs aren't.
So, uh, six, six fifty-six, um, E four, for purposes of this section, any finished space in a basement shall not require associated public open space plaza or mall. However, finished spaces in the basement must comply with the parking requirement.
Got it. That's where I'm mixing. I'm sorry about that.
And so we're...
Basement, that's what it was. If it was a third story above, then you'd have to provide that screening space. Thank you.
So, and so we're, we're good on the parking requirement.
Wait, why are you, wait, hold on.
Right. In, in situation of Brooks Brothers, Brooke, that basement space was underground, it was a basement. This basement is not grave?
Well, no, it still qualifies as a basement because it's only one side of it that is open. It qualifies as a story, but it's, it's a story, but it's still a basement.
All right. Well, we're gonna have to keep this open, so we'll look at that carefully and we'll discuss it during, okay?
Just to finish, since the last sentence did prefer a parking, I just think I should say again.
Yes, thank you.
Again, we do have the shared parking agreement for a much larger building that included no onsite parking. So we're, we're definitely in the clear as far as the parking requirements for the area between the shared parking room and the onsite parking that we are providing.
And that's not even to mention the Grove Street parking that was opened up since to, uh, short-term shopper parking, if you will.
Exactly.
Um, wait, okay, go ahead.
Two questions. First one, relative to the parking, the application, I didn't see anything in the application that said how many parking spaces were in that lot. That's between Brooks Brothers, Steam and you, do you know?
I don't.
Cause it's fourteen onsite and it doesn't say how many in the other lot.
I don't know off the top of my head, do you know? How many spots are in the, the Brooks Brothers Steam, the lots that are all part of the shared parking agreement?
Including the new...
It's on, it's on a survey, it's not even marked.
It's about sixty.
Yeah, can we, can you just, when you come back, also define all the parking spots?
This lot is sixty spaces.
Well, no, because again, the shared parking agreement includes Darien, Roy and Bank.
Guys, guys, come on.
Sorry, sorry. The, the shared parking agreement doesn't just include the Dulcetti properties. It also includes the Darien, Roy and Bank property.
You may want to include that in there.
Well, the shared parking agreement is part of the record, yes.
Okay.
And, and as I said, that, so, but, you know, that was reviewed and approved in two thousand and six when we did not have the additional Grove Street parking open for, uh, retail visitors to downtown Darien. So it was considered sufficient parking for a much larger restaurant at that time.
But things like, um, the, the hairdresser place and all those other buildings weren't there either.
For grocery, you're talking about grocery?
You're talking, you're talking about the grocery parking. I'm talking about the shared parking agreement on and of, in and of itself is considered enough parking for these four buildings.
Got it. Okay, so just, if you could outline the parking, the number of seats, just so we can ensure that it's sufficient.
Okay.
The, this is my, the next, that additional question. I'm looking at the plan for the first floor restaurant. There's a hostess thing, right? I've never seen a quick-service restaurant that's got a hostess in. What happens if they wanna change it to waitress service?
Well, if we change the, the, the use of the, the restaurant, that would be a change in, in use.
Special permit, we'd have to change.
Why, but why is there a hostess in that?
I mean, that's...
I'm trying to count out the seats. I couldn't get to the number of seats and you got two, I don't know.
I mean, you're still gonna have, oh, so...
That's why I went to the beginning.
Where, let me just, maybe you can tell me what you're looking at.
There's sixty-eight seats.
I, I mean, it's not a necessary element. I think that, you know, there may be times when you wanna have somebody out there who can help direct traffic, you know, if it's, or, again, we're gonna have, uh, we may have special events there, so you wanna have that space available, but that's not a, something that we're anticipating having a hostess there at all times.
So there's no waitresses, no waiters, there's no waiters?
No, there, well, yes, I mean, there are, no, there are no table service waitresses, waiters. There are, you know, think about Cafe Nero, you know, you've got, there, there are employees and there are people that will help clear dishes and things that people leave behind, but it's not...
Not a full-service restaurant, let's just make it clear. Okay.
So, I'm sorry, I, I'm trying to wrap my head around it and I'm very interested in this. So until it's gonna be open from five to one AM?
Correct.
Okay. So from five AM to one AM, the same restaurant is serving all of us. So I need to, what would be an example of a quick-service restaurant that I could eat it at five AM, five-thirty and have an egg sandwich and then I can listen to a live band until one AM? Cause I, I'm trying to find an example. Can you help me out?
I mean, a lot of coff- a lot of coffee houses up in Fairfield and New York City and...
Name one that I need to know. I, like, I need the visual.
Excuse me, don't, don't, I'm not gonna name a restaurant for you. I've been to a coffee house in Fairfield and also in New York City that, you know, they have restaurants.
I mean, it's not, it's not uncommon to have a, to have it, to have...
Well, if you give me them, I'd love to. I'm just trying to look for a visual.
So, I, I think that...
You got a week to look, at least.
Right. I, I think that the, the best example that I personally can think of in Darien that's similar to this is something like, you know, Roost or Cafe Nero right now. But I don't know how late either one of those places are open, personally.
I mean, there's Starbucks that sell drinks now.
Starbucks, Starbucks stays open much later. I think that, you know, the fact that we don't have one in town is actually a positive. This is something new for our community and something that I think will be a, a nice addition. However, it's, it's more casual. You don't have to go in and buy a twenty-dollar glass of wine, you know, to be able to sit down. It's, you know, it's, because of the way that it's being run and operated, it will be a more casual, um, type of environment. But, you know, it's almost as if, frankly, the, the best example maybe I can think of in Darien is if you combine like espresso neat and the bar area at, um, at, uh, Melting Pot. You know, how those two areas both use that outdoor courtyard and you're there for coffee in the morning and you're there for live music and drinks in the evening. It's that, that sort of vibe we're gonna have all in one, one space.
Synergistic might be the word that you might want to use.
I like that, synergistic. I don't get to use that very often.
All right. Um, anything else? All right, so we see some, Jeremy, you look like you want to speak.
No. Um, Amy and I talked earlier today with that about the employee parking area. Uh, you can see from the plans, part of it's asphalt, part will be gravel. And then we talked about some kind of change at the entrance in terms of Belgium Block, I think it was Dan's idea, to differentiate so people don't confuse it with the town parking.
Right. And, and we added the addition, we'll also have an employee only sign.
Have a sign as well. So we talked about that this morning.
Okay, so the open items are, number of parking spaces. You already have the parking agreement in the record, right? The, just, uh, double-check the number of seats. And then we'll just verify with staff your interpretation of the regs cause I, I'd like to just kinda explain specifically, you know, how this fits within the regs, the new regs. Sorry, I didn't remember exactly what it was.
So the, you're talking about, uh, six fifty-six E as amended in twenty eighteen?
About the, you know, third floor use and providing open spaces and how that fits in. Did I miss anything?
And I think you want some sort of conceptual drawing of the handicap ramp.
Yes, please.
And one, just real quick.
Go ahead, yeah.
Amy, do you know the approximate square feet of the existing building and what the, what the square feet of the new structure is gonna be total?
The new structure is three thousand seven hundred and twenty-five square feet, total.
Mr. D, do you know what the square footage of the existing building is?
It might be on the... Two floors are about fifteen...
Yep.
The, the two floors of the existing building are fifteen hundred.
Okay, say that, sorry, the two floors in the existing building are about fifteen hundred.
Right. And if you, there is an existing site plan. Um, if you, so I think if you look at the existing site plan, you can see that the, the existing building is sort of a long rectangle. So the addition to the building is, um, on the west side and then, you know, the plaza that we've discussed and the, and the balcony on the other side.
Thank you. Not that this is relevant, but it might just be great for comparative purpose. If you could pull up, or maybe we could pull it from the old file, just the old, you know, footprint of the building in comparison to show the size differential, that would also be...
I think so. And, and actually I would, I would request, um, and I meant to say this at the very beginning, that the two thousand and six approval be made part of the record for this application.
Almost, almost.
For the record, the existing building footprint is one thousand five hundred and forty-three square feet. That's the maximum building footage. That might be all.
All right. Anything else, guys? Anybody?
So we're keeping this open, right, John?
Yeah. Uh, what, you got a date?
We think any, a week or two to hopefully together. Uh, the commission next meets on, uh, not next week, but Tuesday, May seventh, and again on May fourteenth. Let me see.
Oh, you get another week on, is that right?
Yeah, so not next week, but Tuesday, May seventh or Tuesday, May fourteenth. There's time for this application on either night.
Deal of choice.
Deal of choice.
So we can, we can certainly be ready by the seventh. If you'd like to do it that way, the fourteenth is the continuation of the, um,
The regulation changes.
The regulation changes.
Whatever works for your schedule. I mean, you're, you're...
As I said, if you're meeting anyway on the seventh, we can be ready by then. We may as well come in then.
Okay.
Okay, that's two weeks from now.
Yep.
Awesome.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks for your appreciation. Does any, should I, does anybody in the public want to comment on that? Seeing none, you wanna announce the continuation again?
Continuation to Tuesday, May seventh, eight PM in this room, room two oh six at Town Hall.
Awesome, thanks.
Okay. Public hearing item number four, Coastal Site Plan Review, number three four zero, Land Filling and Grading Application, number four five four, Michael and Teresa Casolo, one Toganik Beach Drive. Proposal to construct a new pool, spa, and terrace and perform related site development activities within a regulated area. The one point oh one acre subject property is located on the southern terminus of Toganik Beach Drive at its intersection with Butler's Island Road and is shown on Assistant Map sixty-seven as lot number eighty-four in the R-one zone.
In this case, the Wilder Gleason represents the applicant. Mr. Gleason notified the neighbors. They did go to the Zoning Board of Appeals within the past few weeks. That public hearing before the Zoning Board of Appeals has been continued into May, so I would recommend the commission continue this to May twenty-eighth, which would give the applicant time to obtain the necessary variance, or if needed, revise the plans accordingly. So we have spoken to Wilder Gleason about that, so if you want to continue it to Tuesday, May twenty-eighth at eight PM in this room?
Sounds like, sounds like a good idea. Do a, do a vote. We don't have to vote on that, do we? Motion to continue?
Second.
No, I need one, sorry.
My motion to continue the hearing to May twenty-eighth.
Jim, I saw a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
All right, great. Thank you.
Item number five, Land Filling and Grading, Application number four fifty-three, Jason Parker, twenty-eight Hillcrest Avenue. Proposal to regrade the rear yard and to construct a new stone retaining wall to create a level yard and perform related site development activities. The point three nine acre subject property is located on the west side of Hillcrest Avenue approximately two hundred and thirty feet north of its intersection with Millsix Road and is shown on Assistant Map number twenty-seven as lot number thirty, thirty-one, and is located in the R-one-third zone.
Do any of you guys want to go to lunch on this one? Give us a, using different words, sorry. Just give us a summary.
This is a proposal for a residential property on Hillcrest Avenue. The backyard is very small. There's not much usable yard at the time. It slopes. And the applicant is here to do some regrading to give them a small, usable, flatter area in the backyard by creating some retaining walls.
And is that the, I'm sorry, we got some emails we've quoted.
Right, there was an email, just, go ahead, Fred.
There was some correspondence from the applicant's neighbor this afternoon that was submitted for the record and we distributed that to you earlier via email and hard copy this evening. We also distributed comments from Darren Ostafine regarding some drainage analysis. He, he took a look at the drainage and was of the opinion that the proposed modifications to the lawn would result in similar drainage patterns as what, as what exists out there now. The neighbor's main concerns were around potential runoff from the property and it's our opinion that, or Darren Ostafine's opinion, that, like I said, the, the proposed modifications maintain the existing drainage patterns and wouldn't, wouldn't be anticipated to create any additional or added volume of runoff from the site to adjoining properties.
Can I just mention the application says that the regrading will improve the runoff? That's the street that floods. There's ice packs at the bottom of it.
Well, currently what you have is...
Their application's right, or Darren's right.
Well, they're making it flatter, so that would slow down, and that's what Darren talked about with Fred and I this afternoon, that by making the property flatter, it will slow the rate of the runoff. There's no new impervious surface as part of this. So the amount of runoff is the same. The amount is the same, it will just be a little slower.
Velocity will be slower.
The velocity will be slower.
Lower, yeah.
Yeah.
So the regrading will improve the runoff for a slower velocity?
Yes.
And the grid slopes away, it, it currently slopes away from Hillcrest Avenue. So if there are any flooding issues or reoccurring flooding on Hillcrest...
Look down to the street. Breath yourself.
Right, right. All right, great. Sir, please introduce yourself and...
I'm Jason Parker. I am the property owner and resident at the, at twenty-eight Hillcrest. I have with me George and Dan Monaco, who are the contractors for the project. So much as you guys just discussed, really the genesis of the project is that the backyard is super-sloped. We have a young child and there's not much usable land there. So there is a loosely stacked retaining wall on the top of the backyard that you guys should see on the distributed drawings. That was in place when we purchased the house in September. Kind of haphazardly put together, so we'd be proposing to rebuild that wall properly and then rebuild, add a lower retaining wall to be able to cut and then fill to the bottom of the yard. We would need some additional fill to the bottom of the yard due to the slope. And I can provide you numbers on that, but that's really it. So the side yards, as it abuts to the neighbors, would remain untouched, so we would blend within the retaining walls to the current grade side yards.
I'm just trying to see which way it goes.
Sure.
It goes, this is eighty-seven, this is ninety-four.
So it goes that way. Got it, okay.
Should I cut ninety-four down to, correction, you, you wanna cut ninety-four down?
On the top wall, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, I guess we're trying to just envision what the, just the project, if you will, sort of, looking at the plans.
So that the top wall, where the wall sits is currently ninety-four and a half feet, we would propose bringing the bottom of the wall to ninety-three feet.
Oh, okay.
And then the bottom retaining wall would sit on current grade at eighty-six feet and we would backfill to eighty-nine feet roughly, so the three-foot wall backfill under the coping on the wall.
Okay.
I don't understand. You understand?
So the flat, the play, the play yard, if I can call it that?
Sure.
Goes from the back of the house, which is ninety-four, down to the, to the eighty-seven or eighty-six, just...
No, to eighty-nine, because they're gonna fill that part, the eighty-six up to eighty-nine. So there'll still be a sloping yard. It will go from ninety-four down to eighty-nine, whereas now it goes from ninety-four down to eighty-six.
Correct.
Listen to what this says.
I gotta go ninety-four to eighty-nine, back up to ninety.
Right, it, it's tough to distinguish the existing grades and the proposed, but if you think of the top of the wall as eighty-nine, this proposed ninety here.
Oh, there we go, ninety-one.
And then proposed ninety-one line.
And then ninety, okay.
Proposed ninety-two.
Very, very...
One of the trick is, there is really no proposed ninety-three, because the bottom of that, I'll call it new upper wall, will be at ninety-three.
Correct.
So there is no proposed ninety-three, so if, if you will, I'll stand corrected that...
Up here, I'm sorry, that's where he's talking about that.
The land now goes from ninety-four and a half to eighty-six. It will go from ninety-three to eighty-nine.
Okay.
So there, it's...
Yes, thank you, Jeremy. Perfect.
Perfect visual.
So up three feet at the bottom.
Example.
Bottom, lower, a foot and a half at the top, gradual...
Okay. If you could just have your expert tell us how much fill is coming onto the site, that would be helpful.
Good evening, Dan Monaco, GM Landscape. So basically, as you guys mentioned, we're going from ninety-four and a half down to ninety-three at the top wall.
Yeah.
So it's about a differential of a foot and a half. And the lower wall, we're going from a current elevation of eighty-six to eighty-nine. Surface areas in the cut fill region are about equivalent, based on my numbers, so you're looking at differential of about a foot and a half difference times there. That's, that's, that's your fill amount. To be noted here is that there is, there is gonna be a significant amount of excavation for the footing of the wall. And in addition to that, there will be a, a clean gravel drainage around the whole interior perimeter of that wall, which is gonna offset the amount of, the amount of fill required. So we're estimating somewhere about one triax with the fill.
Uh, one truck.
Triax.
Sorry.
Yeah, twenty, about, about, twenty cubi yards.
Okay.
Yeah, in that realm.
Okay. Wow.
It's pretty subtle.
Yes.
And what drainage system are you putting in for this, Amy?
Um, it would just be...
Sorry, if you could just come up to the mic for the record.
Come up to the mic.
Sorry. It would just be, we're proposing just weep holes in the wall to gravel inside and then weep holes flow naturally as is, not collecting it and redistributing in one direction or another.
Okay.
Right now, there's coltacs on both sides of the house. Those were installed when the house additions were done.
Right, and they, they serve as, it's just drainage coming off the top of the house.
Got it.
So no additional waters coming off the house into the yard.
Okay, so typically, it's, it's good to see yards get flatter, because then you reduce the velocity of water flow and the impact to the surrounding neighbors based on their comments is, in my mind, little to none to beneficial, because you're gonna reduce the velocity, right?
Right, and the, it's actually, what Fred mentioned is, it's actually not the downhill neighbor who emailed the concern. It's the neighbor to the, to the side. And as Mr. Parker mentioned, there's no regrading within fifteen feet of the side and care will be taken to make sure that the, the direction of the water isn't changing. It's all gonna continue to flow towards the back and not towards the side.
Right, great, okay.
This, this says proposed, drainage system proposed three coltech, three unicoltacs. Is that existing or is that proposed?
That's, so the as-built for this was as the builder submitted it last year.
This says proposed.
No, 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 but this is the original as-built.
Correct.
For your home.
As submitted by Fox Hill.
That he's using.
Right.
Right? And then they overlaid the as-built with the new plan.
Correct.
Well, these are, and these are marked wrong.
No, no, this...
That's confusing. That's where the elevations are confused.
Right, if he had said proposed grading plan, it would have been clear than saying proposed plan, because the coltacs are there.
Right, so the coltacs are currently in place.
Got it. Instead of drawing up a whole new plan, they just overlay the regrading on top of that. Got it?
Yep.
All right. Any other questions?
No. The erosion controls are shown in the plan, the silt fence here. Have you estimated about a week to do the work? Two weeks?
Yes, ma'am. Or the, or, how we take the, how we start to finish grading this?
All right, they're from the...
Can we repeat that?
Yeah.
So the proposed construction plan is about roughly three weeks.
Got it, okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, anybody here to talk about this application? Seeing none, can I get a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Okay, a second. Mr. Rand is second, all in favor.
Hope you can get through that, Chris.
Number six, flood damage prevention application number three ninety-five, Dylan David and Jill Rowe to Phillips Lane, proposal to install a post and rail fence with tricky wire attached within the rear yard to enclose the property and perform related set development activities within a regulated area. Point three seven acre subject property is located on the south side of Phillips Place, partially within the city of Stamford, approximately a hundred and forty feet east of its intersection with Oakdale Road and is shown on Assistant Map number twenty-five at lot seventeen B in the R-one-third zone.
Kev, I think you said number three ninety-five. It's number three ninety-four.
I apologize.
No, it's all good, just for the, the record. All right, so this seems like pretty simple fence in a flood zone.
What's, what's interesting about this, Fred and I talked to Darren Ostafine of Public Works today. We've, Fred and I have been working with Mr. Rowe. This is a split rail fence with wire meshing on it, which is in the flood zone. And we referred this to DEEP to make sure that this isn't gonna cause flood concerns for the state. So they, they sent an email back saying, we understand, and if it was a significant structure or something like that, we'd have concern. We understand homeowners' desires to put up such fences and as long as it's not stockade or going to block water flow.
Right.
Or impact water on the neighbors, DEP was okay with it.
This is a perfect fence for that, I would imagine.
Right, and Mr. Rowe has been working with us on designing the fence accordingly. This got EPC approval recently. And Darren notes that, yes, it's good that the fence stays open, but if anything gets in the mesh, leaves debris, it'll have to be cleaned up, so that's important. Now, one thing to note is, the fence is not only in the flood zone, the very back of the fence, which is parallel to the Norotan River, is in the floodway. So most of the fence, which runs up the side of Mr. Rowe's property or which will, is not in the floodway, but the back portion is. If it were to be moved out of the floodway, about ten feet, it would in essence be in the middle of his yard. So just wanted to point that out to you, that part of it is in the floodway. Usually, we don't let development occur in the floodway. But again, you're having a, you're creating a fence parallel to the river that is gonna be open. Water will flow in and out of it.
One clarification, floodway versus flood zone, the floodway has velocity associated with it?
Would have more velocity.
Okay.
In this case, if we were at the site today, the Norotan River is six, seven feet below, in terms of elevation, where this is. So it's not right up against it, it's...
All right, it'd have to be a pretty significant flood to impact that fence.
Pretty big fence. And...
He's trying to keep the soccer balls from going into the river.
Exactly.
It's called spades man.
Yes, and soccer balls, dogs, whatever.
Yes, children.
Yeah.
All right, so if you, do you want to say anything else, sir, or did we just cover it pretty much well?
Yeah, David Rowe, property owner, not much more to add. There is a sewage easement that runs parallel to the river as well, so we're making sure we put the fence in front of that to make sure there's access, if there's anything needs doing. It's pretty simple. We just wanted to make sure we do things the right way.
Great, no, thanks. Normally, somebody would throw...
Put the fence up.
Put the fence up and...
Right, I put one question to Mr. Rowe.
Yes, please, sir.
I was there yesterday, and there's a house which is number six on the mailbox.
It's number two on the mailbox.
He's two. I know that, but I saw a house with number six.
Okay.
And next door, there was a house on the corner.
Yes.
With a number on the other side that said seventy-five or something, I can't remember. Where are you?
So if you, if you go into Phillips Place.
Yeah.
You've got the corner one where, where there's a pile of mulch at the moment that's just been dropped off, which you may have seen. And there's a driveway going into that corner house, where the next one down, it's, it's got a number two on the front door and a two on the mailbox.
Oh, I missed it, sorry.
I tried.
All right.
All right, anybody here would like to speak about that application? Seeing none, can I get a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Any second? The three of us got the second.
I'm sorry, Mr. Brown.
Sorry.
Enjoy your fence with these soccer balls.
Moving on to the general meeting.
Yes, please, sir.
General meeting, item number one, deliberations only regarding the following amendments to the zoning map, CSM number two dash twenty nineteen, proposed by the Darien Planning and Zoning Commission. Rowals will amend the zoning, Darien zoning map to rezone the following six properties. Two seventy-three West.
You don't have to go through it. We'll, we'll go through every one.
Individually.
Individually. And my request to Jeremy, as we do this, is, yeah, I think we made it pretty clear we're gonna take the property owner's lead on this whenever we had one. So I think Jeremy said that we got...
Sure, right. Two seventy-three West Avenue, you may recall, that's the property that's just north of the Palmer's Redevelopment and just west of People's Bank. We heard from the property owner last, last hearing that she does not want her property to be rezoned, that there is, she believes there's potential for People's Bank to buy it or whoever that might be.
Some other commercial.
So in this case, the homeowner was opposed to the rezoning.
Hey, does anybody have any other comments around that, or are they fine with what the homeowner would...
I, I have a note that we, that this, that that was continued.
No.
It was a long time ago. She wasn't here.
Yes, you're right.
She was in Florida, then she came back.
Okay, okay.
Yes, you're right, Jim.
So that's a no.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a landowner's...
Yeah, correct. She came back and, okay. Nineteen seventy-three Boston Post Road.
Nineteen seventy-three, if you may recall, it's the, the block extending from Mama Carmelo's, Papa Joe's, Allstate, that property. It, the rezoning involves the back left corner, behind what used to be the Puritan, rezoning a small portion of their parking lot. So the NB zone would not be a hundred feet from Boston Post Road. It would match coincident with the rear property line. I don't recall receiving anything from either the neighbors or the property owner.
Yeah, I didn't have any either, so my thought is yes. Anybody have a different thought or agree?
No, I think it's fine.
Yeah, okay. Six Rings End Road?
Six Rings End, you may recall, we heard from the property owner who sent the letter saying, saying, yes, I've recently put in a number of improvements to my residential structure. I would be willing to have my property rezoned to residential. And then the neighbors... And then the neighbors, uh, property owner, Mr. Tibbetts, came to both public hearings saying he was opposed due to its potential impact on buffer requirements on his property, which is the, uh, I believe the Christian Science Reading Room.
Reading Room, yeah.
Yeah. So, this is interesting.
Who trumps?
Um, well, I, well, I, I would say, um, as is trumps. You know, if you have a dispute between the two.
Leave well enough alone.
Leave it well enough.
It'll change.
Yeah. You agree too?
I do.
Yeah, okay. So that would be a no.
Okay. One sixty-four Al Kings Highway South is the property at the corner of Cross Street and Al Kings Highway South. You may recall, the property owner, Mr. Constantinus, was opposed to the rezoning of his property. In addition, Mr. LaTrenta, who owns the, uh, office building to the, I call it the north, was also opposed. One of the neighbors who lives on Al Kings Highway South was in favor of the rezoning. But you may recall, Mr. Constantinus was adamantly opposed.
Yes. Um, so that is the owner with our precedent, that would be a no.
Yeah.
Okay. Fifty-five Boston Post Road is TD Bank. It's a corner of Boston Post Road and West Norwalk Road. This is the proposal to rezone the northern portion of the property, which now has a conservation easement over most of it. If I recall, some neighbors were concerned, but when it was explained that there's an easement there and it's not likely to be redeveloped.
He was receptive to the idea.
He was fairly receptive. No word from the property owner.
Okay, so, uh, that would be a yes.
Mm-hmm.
The last one is fourteen forty-one Boston Post Road, the Darien Library. Uh, right now, that property is split zoned, and it's also in the municipal use overlay. That property's been developed according to municipal use overlay. And it is likely that any future development of the property would be consistent with the municipal use overlay, which is uh, more liberal, gives them more flexibility than the underlying zone. So the change really would have no effect on the library. They neither sent a letter in favor nor opposed.
But you did inform the library.
I've met with them a couple times since then.
I would say yes.
I agree.
Okay.
It's worth, uh, one six for the, uh, decision.
So we can, we can draft a resolution on these for our next meeting, if you wish.
Hey, Jeremy?
Yep.
Inside this packet that you gave us, oh, it's the same one place. Inside this packet you gave us, it's a little, I will skip on it.
There were a couple when the commission.
Fourteen Rings End Road?
There were a couple when we met down in room one nineteen that we went through, that we discussed. Putting them out, propose, put forth and not put forth. Some of them fell by the wayside for a variety of reasons.
Okay.
All right, so we got three out of six on that. You guys write up a resolution and, okay. Next general meeting answer.
Special permit number thirty-five C, site plan coastal, site plan review seventy-nine B, flood damage prevention application number sixty-eight B, Narroton Yacht Club, Inc., twenty-three Baywater Drive, request for extension of time to complete phase two improvements.
Right, uh, you may recall, Narroton Yacht Club was a total redevelopment. Uh, they received a certificate of occupancy in March, I believe, and that covered everything. It's, there are a number of mi- very minor improvements that remain to be completed, uh, such as relocation of dumpster enclosure, some other items which we consider to be pretty minor. What they're asking for is an extension of time to complete those minor items, which would give them time to complete them. Uh, so, the applicant has asked that, since the work is not likely to be completed uh, for a while, they ask for a one-year extension to allow these minor.
How about we go to January first, twenty twenty?
Okay. That would be, uh, eight months from now.
I don't see, if they're minor, I don't see the need to go a year. Would everybody agree with that?
Do you think they're going to start construction once the club season ends?
Yeah.
When they're done in the fall?
I mean, they're pretty minor, right?
Relocation of dumpster enclosure, possibly some.
Belgium Black Kermiton tree pits and entrance wood deck walkway plan around.
Paved crosswalk.
It has to be done before the winter.
I bet you Nicole, they'd do it in the spring.
Why aren't they doing it now, then?
Because they ran out, this says they ran out of money.
It also says they're in mediation with the contractor.
Oh, I was.
No, that's different.
Yeah, it's a different deal.
Oh, sorry.
This says, it said budgetary.
I don't know, I, I don't like these little things hanging out there too long.
Mr. Klein is here on behalf of Jackie Kaufman. If you have any questions, uh, they represented the club at the public.
I guess that's a question we can ask.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. So I guess the, as you're walking out, the question I would have, is January one a problem or?
You know.
I'm sorry.
Jay Klein, Carmody Law for the applicants. Uh, you know, with the reason why we asked for a year, even though the work is pretty minor, we just want to ensure that we have as much flexibility as possible. You know, I know the weather is getting better, but this is when the club is in use, uh, so that's why we would anticipate that it wouldn't, these items might not get done until, you know, maybe the fall or maybe the start of the next season. It depends on, you know, when they have the time operationally, uh, and then, of course, funding, how that all lines up. So, um, you know, I think a year just gives everyone enough comfort that this will get done and we won't have to be back here again, hopefully.
You're confident it'll get done within?
I'm confident it, it'll get done, one way or the other, by this time next year.
Okay, give them, I'm fine with a year then. Okay.
Great.
Uh, everybody good with a year?
Yeah, motion to approve a year.
All in favor, okay, perfect.
Thanks so much. Have a good night, everyone.
You too.
Last one, flood damage prevention application number three two on Lynn Filling, application number three seventy-four Hernandez, fifteen River River, Weaverley Road, request for extension of time.
This is the one.
Yes, sorry.
No, don't.
We were read back to back, so blurred and.
Yeah, so this is, I guess this is the one with the contractor dispute.
There's a contractor dispute here that's been going on quite a while. They're in mediation, so the architect sent a letter noting that that's going to take a while, then they have to get started, restarted up with the construction. So while the commission has granted other extensions here, this is certainly a unique circumstance in my book, this has been going on quite a while, this dispute.
We already gave them an extension once or twice.
That's correct.
Now they're going to vote against both of them.
Yep, this has been.
Well, if they don't get an extension, then what happens?
Then they have to come back to the commission for a, a new permit.
There's a guy with the swing in the backyard when everyone plays in front of you. Right, and the mud washers down the street.
Right. Yeah, fifteen Waverly, I think this might be, uh, next to Jan Raymond's house, if I recall.
So, I don't know, what, do you recall the extensions we gave them? Were they six-month increments or?
I mean, the, I think one was a year, one might have been six months.
What do you guys want to do on this one? I know Steve doesn't want to do one.
I mean, what, it, it sounds like the guys.
This is the house.
Being, uh, next, negligent, he's stuck in a crack while I make his life more difficult.
Six months? Six months was the last one, we'll go six months this time?
To start, to recommence the work, which would be till April, uh, October twenty-third.
Okay, give October thirty-first, just to make it easy. Um, is that okay with everybody?
Yes.
All in favor for the extension? Okay, good.
Steve?
Steve is against.
Steve's no.
Okay. Okay, uh, and then with deliberations on tonight?
Tonight, the, uh, two closed hearings, the first, uh, well, actually, let's start from the bottom. Mr. Rowe to Phillips Place.
Pretty, pretty easy.
Okay.
Just with, uh, well, with deliberating, so, uh, but, uh, but just with those stipulations that, you know, keep the, keep the wire.
Free from debris.
Yeah, okay.
The second one was, uh, regrading, uh, twenty-eight Hillcrest.
Pretty just.
Yeah.
And the other one, uh, Fred cannot convince the applicant to withdraw one forty-five Al Kings Highway North. We won't prepare anything for next week, but, um, you know, later in May, we might have something.
I think, yeah, there may be a, there's a deficiency now in the application, right, so.
Correct.
Uh, that deficiency, those deficiencies, plural, would cause us to deny the application, but there's no rush to write, write this resolution.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
So you reject it, you technically reject the application because it wasn't complete?
Correct.
Once we see, is that assumed to be a complete application?
Well, they, they still have some details to work out, the responses to the engineer, the details about the wetlands, et cetera. And certainly, the hearing's closed, so they can't get that information of the commission and the fact that no one showed up at the hearing to present. Uh, will mention to the applicant that's best if they withdraw. Thank you.
All right, and then, uh, project update?
Project update, um, Kentset's moving along. Uh, they're still out on Kentset Drive constructing the final few condominiums, Old Town Hall Homes.
You have a date, a finish date on that, you did? Within the, by the end of the year?
I think they have one or two more to do, so it'll probably be next year for the whole project.
I haven't seen any construction house there in months.
Well, they're out there off of, uh, all the way at the end of Wakemore is where they're doing a couple years. Uh, Old Town Hall Homes, the foundation permit, Dave is currently reviewing it. Uh, there's a couple tweaks they need to make. We expect that they'll get started on that foundation next week. And it's probably going to take a little over a year to construct the whole thing.
What's with the EMT building getting relocated?
Well, yeah, in terms of, there was a lot of conversation between the housing authority and the town in terms of the town's desire to have the paramedic stay where they are, so they can charge in vehicles overnight and stay there in that location. It was realized that with all the construction vehicles coming and going, that it's probably more prudent just to move them off-site for a while till at least the building's framed and they're doing the interior work to move them back. So I just found out this morning that, uh, the paramedics during the day are operating out of post fifty-three. And during the evening, they're staying in Stanford where they actually used to be running out of, just for a little while.
Right.
I believe that was your idea.
Correct.
What'd he say?
Commissioner Cunningham's idea of the evening hours, so.
Yeah, they need a place to plug in the vehicles, and that was really one of the.
And a place to sleep, too.
And a place to sleep.
And, uh.
At night, so that's great.
Right, and it's, so it'll make it easier for everyone. You don't have to worry about, you know, a truck delivering rocks or steel blocking in the paramedics, and it, it's all much smoother this way.
All right.
I have two more to ask.
Oh, he's, go ahead.
Boy Scouts?
Boy Scouts, uh, if you've been by there, you've seen that they put up the new six-foot green screen. Uh, the tents this year seem to me to be more enclosed than in the past.
Much better.
So, there is a lot less debris just laying out there, and so that's gone well. There is, the neighbors have voiced some of their concerns directly to the scouts and their liaison, because the scouts, as part of the P and D approval, have set up liaison to try to address any neighbor concerns. So the drop-offs appear to be going much smoother. If you have any concerns, let me know, and I can relay them on to the scouts.
Jeremy, can we request a summary of the neighbor concerns from that liaison, so we can just get a, get a flavor for what the, what the issues are?
Yes, I think they do expect to give us one, because I have spoken with, uh, gentleman's name is Todd.
Todd, yeah.
Uh, and I've received some concerns, and I've told neighbors, if you have concerns, go, please go right to Todd, uh, because he's the one that can fix them. I can't.
Can you just really quickly go over some of the concerns?
I think it's required. I think, I think the report's required.
I think one of, some of the concerns dealt with, I'll call it routine traffic after an event. Uh, I think there was a scout meeting a few weeks ago.
So they weren't necessarily exactly tied to the tag sale.
Unrelated to the tag sale.
Not supposed to have gotten anything done at tag sale.
That's correct. It was before the tag sale. And so what was happening was, a lot of parents were waiting to pick up. Some parents were, I think, maybe even waiting on West Avenue. Some parents had to turn around. So there was a little congestion at the end of a scout meeting, for example. Steve, you had one other?
Uh, Oxbridge Club.
Oxbridge, much better in terms of the erosion controls. I spoke about it with Dave earlier today, that the contractor's doing a much better job keeping the dirt off.
Hundred percent.
Will you, will you just keep an eye, I'm sorry, will you just keep an eye on Mansfield now? Because now that the entrance to the club members is on Mansfield across from the construction Darien, they're, they're tracking a lot of dirt on the other side now.
Yeah, that's not construction related.
Correct. I mean, it's, it's an unintended consequence of that.
More people coming and going down there.
Sounds like, uh, the completion date within six months?
Yes.
When you go out to the club property.
Friend of mine lives right there.
Or be on the right-hand side, there's the white house. There's a white house there. Wasn't that thing coming down?
No.
That's not.
From which side you go on?
You go in the, in the old, old entrance to the club, which is now the construction entrance to the club. As soon as you pull in, there's the, the old original white house.
That's where the guys live, they take care of the horses.
I thought they were knocking that thing down.
Uh, I think they're just cleaning it up, up the outside.
They haven't touched that thing.
Yeah. Uh, can look into that.
And then the dirt piles all over the place, and the greenhouse was never supposed to be touched. That's on the back, behind the paddle tennis courts, that's. I thought the front house was supposed to do something.
Yeah, they're supposed to clean it up. The outside, yeah. No, just the facade.
That's it, that's my.
That's it, yeah.
Anything new on Palmer's, uh?
Uh, no, uh, I did talk to Dave Keating today, that, uh, Federal Realty has been moving along with the Architecture Review Board on their sign program. ARB looked at it last month, approved it. Uh, Federal Realty also met with Ed Gentile on certain other improvements. So they are continuing with every intent of, uh, I'll call it September, November timeframe.
Okay.
Breaking ground.
Great. Nothing new on Palmer's and, uh?
David Jones is still working with D, State DOT and the Army Corps of Engineers.
Yes, on the drainage ditch, which is.
Yep.
It's minor, but on the front door of the road, right, training, um, post office, it says that as of January twenty-something, that they're closing the office and moving it?
Moving under Palmer's.
Did they, is that public knowledge, that they're moving on private confirm?
Yes.
That's what I was told, too.
All right, anything else, guys? No, no other business?
May seventh.
Oh, yeah, the calendar.
May seventh, two weeks from tonight, and on that agenda is, uh, the continuation, the big event will be the continuation of the Diller and Darien High School cross-country path.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we continued it, yeah.
We continued it. Uh, Joe Canis just dropped off revised plans. I posted them to the town website earlier today.
I wasn't here for the.
And the other interesting one on May seventh will be improvements to the Rewack well. That is, that property is located off of Lake Drive. So if you go down Lake Drive, there's a little driveway that leads off into the woods to a little shed that's back there, and that's, so they're looking to replace that, so.
What?
That's town property?
Who's they?
It's owned by Aquarian Water Company. Aquarian Water Company wants new.
I lost my dog in that thing.
Yeah, it's very wooded, it's just.
I did.
You found it?
Found my dog.
Oh, okay.
Uh, okay, and then after May seventh, you got?
May fourteenth, the week after, is the continuation of the zoning regulations, uh, the MU zone and the regulation changes.
Unfortunately, I'm not available on the fourteenth.
Me too.
That's two no's on the fourteenth.
Can we get three?
No, no.
Do I hear?
I'm on the three.
Okay.
Uh.
Someone else can't make it, let us know.
May fourteenth.
No, I'm, I'm flying out the morning of the fifteenth. Okay, good, we're good. Um, and then, we, could you just give us a couple more dates?
Sure, after that, uh, the next date after that would be May twenty-eighth, which is a very full night. One, maybe anywhere from six to eight public hearings, uh, including the continuations we had tonight of seventy-seven Leroy, one Tokenick Beach Drive, and four or five other hearings. So it's a very full night on May twenty.
There's, there's no reason to do May twenty-first to clear, uh, some items?
I guess we can see how it goes.
Okay, let's, yeah, let's see how May seventh and fourteenth. Is, is everybody around May twenty-first, or maybe a quick deliberation meeting, general meeting, no? Just to clear the decks?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, well.
So that's potential. Perfect, okay, great. Everybody good?
Yep.
So, uh, could I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.
I will. Thank you.
It is nine thirty-one. Thank you, TV seventy-nine. We are off the record.